You go.
You got six o'clock already? And I almost, I got five fifty-nine.
Just wanted to admit the guests, there's a bunch of people in the waiting room, so. Sorry again. There we go.
Called on the carpet once for going early. All right, here we go.
Oh, we're good.
I'm calling the Village Across Plains Board of Trustees meeting the order of Monday, November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. Roll call, please.
Let's see, Brad.
Here.
Let's see, Brenner.
Here.
Let's see, four of us. Here. Let's see, Paul and Kowski.
Here.
Let's see, Galvin. Here, President Leighton.
Here. They stand for a pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. The judiciary powers which sustains one nation, one unity, in this world, with the protection of justice.
For a public comment, this is an opportunity for anyone to address the village board on any issue. Please observe the time limit of three minutes. But the village board encourages input from residents that may not discuss or act on any issue that is not duly, nor is on the agenda. Do we have anybody here that would like to speak? All right, do we have anybody? Out there?
I don't think so. No.
All righty, we'll go to the consent agenda. On request of any trustee, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration under general business. Does anybody have anything they'd like removed? All right, do I have a motion to, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
A second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same? Don't move. We're at, uh, reported village officer. I only have one for tonight. Everybody should mark their calendar for the second Monday of January, that's the thirteenth. We're gonna have a special meeting to go over all the aspects and update you on the new village hall police station. So that'll be the only thing on the agenda for that evening, but.
When is it, January thirteenth?
Yeah, January thirteenth, that should be the second Monday of, of the month.
What time?
That'll be six o'clock.
I don't think it's an official call, but there's a pool committee meeting that night, which I think they're usually here.
Well.
But I'm sure they can move.
Yeah, they can move, or we can try to get the library.
Just, yeah.
Or we can adjust times or something.
Yeah, I, I just want to, you know, I wasn't trying to.
No, no, I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I think.
Say that again.
We could adjust the time in the full committee.
Okay. All right, I'll, I'll talk to Mike on that. Vice President?
Just two weeks of birthdays. We have Taylor, um, been there some, did I say it right? He has celebrated one year on November sixth, and Jeff Kitzel, um, celebrated three years on November eighth.
Thank you. Other trustees? I have Doug then Sarah.
I want to thank the public work staff for participating in the library at Storytime and giving the decision opportunity to own. Thank Elizabeth at the library for meeting with me and putting me down to the library.
Okay, Sarah?
I was just gonna give a little bit about what we're doing with the library board. Um, we've been working on developing an evaluation for the director, and it's not a reflection of Elizabeth at all, she's fantastic. But we just thought that might be, um, a useful thing to have in place. We've, um, Elizabeth did a great job of gathering what other libraries are doing, so just keeping you up to date with what we're working on. It's more of a, I should say, like a reflective tool, because of course we're not experts on library design.
Do you have your hand up, Cameron? No, okay. All right, uh, village administrator?
Yeah, so I just wanted to, I know this will be a little bit of a spoiler for the thirteenth, but we continue work on the village hall police department. Um, almost have a floor plan finalized and starting work on, um, some furniture and technology as well. So you'll hear more along, more about that in January.
All right, thank you. Uh, village department has Bobby?
I just remind everyone about the April election. Um, I printed out and brought, um, forms if you're gonna rerun. Um, Judy, Doug, and Sarah are up for reelection. I also have non-candidacy forms if you're not planning to rerun. Um, you can start circulating your papers December first. Um, they need to be back to me June, January seventh. And then if you're not gonna rerun, I do need that form to act like December twenty-seventh. Um, these forms are also available online if you want, like, to the table. Stuffing some handwriting. We have one more?
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Mike?
Uh, just real quick, wanna let you know the, uh, Lions Club been very close with the Lions A C project, uh, fundraising, uh, endpoint. They are, uh, roughly, well, they've received a number of pledges, uh, but they just received two very large checks of fifty thousand and twenty-five thousand. It sounds like in the last week. So they are within, you know, a few thousand dollars that we've been looking for.
Did they get a big grant too?
The village got the grant, two hundred and thirty thousand for all for the project. Uh, so we're kinda working backwards right now. They'd like to actually do their groundbreaking on Trump days, uh, this year, so May third. Uh, so we're trying to work backwards with that. Actually, there's no other things to go through the village side of things, the plant commission, the village board, so. We'll try and get those kinda finer within those agendas, but, uh, we're getting close, so it's exciting. Yeah, and then, uh, the only other thing is the pool fundraising committee has been meeting monthly. Uh, we've had two meetings now, getting, after finding our second meeting, and we kinda got our legs under us and understanding, you know, where we really need to go and, uh, really decide to work on. There will be a fundraising packet that's brought to you all, um, just kinda describing different parts of, of the project and what really could be able, uh, to, for the community to possibly provide money for it, so. Uh, we're, we're getting excited about that as well. We're glad, kind of glad to see more fundraising strategy kind of go away. And go to build, and then kind of start a new one.
Did you hear that word, doing a special meeting on the thirteenth, and it sounds like you have a pool meeting?
December fifteenth?
No, January.
January fifteenth, okay.
We've got it adjusted.
In order plays.
Yeah, but.
Supposed to be the second Monday, so.
Oh, we did change it. Uh, Martin, we can do that. That's right. Um, that's fine, we'll.
Yeah, it's okay to do that.
Okay. Oh, let's go to tomorrow.
Super cool. Uh, Doug, already mentioned this, um, shout out to Public Works, but I just wanted to say thank you, uh, publicly to all of the village partners. Um, we did a community help our stories in this fall, and every single department in the village, uh, Bill, Ellen, too, thanks partly to dress up for Halloween. Sent, um, a group of employees, um, our department has to come and read stories with the kids and sort of share, like, how they help the community. So it was a super cool show of community and, um, teamwork, I think.
Thank you.
All righty, anybody else? All right, we'll go to general business. First one, discuss discussion and possible action regarding approval of Market Street combined certified survey maps. E T Engineering and Prairie Hill Partners LLC.
Yeah, I can present this one. They are online. I believe James is online from J T Engineering. Um, so this was presented at Plan Commission back in October. Um, and so this is a J T Engineering who was contracted by Zirin Parking Products and Design Center um, to combine a couple of parcels along Mar- Market Street. Um, so I will kinda show you what those parcels look like. So this first one is the eastern parcel. And then there's also a western parcel, um, and so they're being proposed to be combined into a single parcel. Um, so that would be, um, so like the, the eastern would be one, and then the western side would be one, um, to just combine into a single parcel using a certified survey map or C S M. Um, so that would then result in two addresses, nineteen eighteen and then nineteen twenty-two Market Street. Um, so right now, um, these lots are a lumber and building materials, um, business, except for there's the southernmost um, building on the property that's rented out to an auto repair shop right now. Um, so really Prairie Hill Partners is looking to just combine the lots just to make it easier for, um, operating and then, um, for title for the sites as well. So I don't know, James, if you wanna add anything there?
Uh, no, I, I think that covers it quite well. Um, currently the east side is two tax IDs and the west side is two tax IDs. And we would like to make each side a single ID. Um, the rented business, as mentioned, to the auto repair shop or auto dealer shop. Um, they've been put on notice that at some point that, uh, lease renewal will not occur at the end of the current term. I believe it's, it's, uh, not imminent, but within the next year or two. And, uh, that will not be renewed, so that address will probably, uh, go away for, for all intensive purposes on the eastern parcel.
So really, there's two parcels on each side of this street. That's what they're, they're not, okay, I was just wondering. When I first, I thought.
East side and then west side.
I've got you.
Yep.
Oh, but they both had even addresses, which is odd if you have two different. Usually you would have an odd side and an even side. My, did I miss on, did you say eighteen and?
Nineteen eighteen and nineteen twenty-two, was that right, James, or did I have a typo in my memo?
I would think they should be odd, one odd, one even.
I can double check that, because I'm sure you took it from my cover letter, so I can certainly, um, circle back.
Okay.
Yeah, generally it should be an odd and even.
That would make sense. Um, so what we're doing tonight is hopefully, um, so the Plan Commission reviewed and recommended approval of the combination of these C S Ms at their October seventh meeting, so, um, that would just be what we would recommend is approval for the combination of these parcels at the board level.
Do I have a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the combination as presented.
Second.
Yeah, a motion in a second. The only thing I would say is if there's a typo there, we gotta change that.
Yeah, James and I will work on that.
Yeah, this, sorry. Yeah, okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Sorry, go ahead, James.
It, it is even and odd. I apologize. The, the western side is, uh, twenty-three.
Okay, thank you. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same? Don't move. Number two, discussion and possible action on final, final change order for water system construction. Final is great, twenty twenty-two water system improvements. Um, so back in twenty twenty-two, the water system improvement contract was awarded to Ports and Construction for three million, two hundred ninety-four thousand, nine hundred sixty-one dollars. Through a combination of work being added and then supplemental bid items and allowances being deducted from the contract. The final change order is a deduct to that contract price of fifty-one thousand, five hundred fifty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents, which then results in a final contract price of three million, two hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and one dollars and eighteen cents. So this, yeah, effectively cleans up the books for the next agenda item, which would be the final, final payout. All right, thank you. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the final fix, change order for water systems.
I'll second that. Right, I have a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Uh, aye. All opposed, same? All right, three, discussion and possible action on final pay request for water system construction. So conveniently enough, we saw that approval coming and have updated the contract price and payout accordingly. Um, so then the, the remaining balance owed to Ports and Construction is the three hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars and forty-six cents.
I have the motion to approve the final pay request for the water system construction.
I'll second that. They have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same? Don't move.
Like if it was a decrease, keep going.
You just had to wait two years for it. Yeah. All right, here we go. Discussion and possible action on final pay request for the twenty twenty-four street rehabilitation and maintenance. Um, so Brian and Jerry worked on this one for the asphalt work that's around, um, Lewis Street, Julia Street, American Legion Drive, and Seonam Court. The unit price contract, different than what we just did for the lump sum contract for the water system, had a original contract price of two hundred and ten thousand and some change based on the unit price contract and quantities used. The pay application due to pain and going is a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, forty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents. Because you self-funded and we don't have funding agencies involved, we don't go as far with the change orders because you just, you're paying for what you got on a unit price basis. So this one's a little simpler. Um, but again, a deduct from what was anticipated. All right, do I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve and pay the one eighty-seven zero forty-nine thirty-one as presented.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
For lots of good things from the neighbors.
Well, good. Good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same? Don't move. Number five, discussion and possible action on task order for facility plan and a water wastewater treatment plan. All right, let's go down a little bit. We did get on the first three. Um, so facility plan. Last time we were here, we talked about some of the potential upcoming expenses of treatment plan. One of the things that I hindsight probably didn't mention or didn't mention well enough is unless you're doing one-for-one replacements of the plants, totally in kind maintenance replacements, you can usually skirt around the D N R reviews if it's as just replacing kind. If there's any sort of planning for future increasing your capacity, anything that might impact what the facility can do in the future, D N R gets a crack at review of that. That review cannot happen until a facility plan is in place, which lasts for a window of twenty years. Um, believe it or not, that guy in the back room was probably chuckling, the facility plan was done in both two thousand three, two thousand four. So our twenty-year window is effectively done, um, which generally coincides with the clean water fund debt being paid off next year. So you're kind of at this twenty-year window where if there's anything coming, it need, anything substantial coming, it needs a facility plan. So what we threw together is what that facility plan would look like. In the good old days, I would have stacked with probably seven hundred pages to make it a little more, um, exciting when I can set them, set the book down instead of a PDF. That essentially goes through every component at the plant. Um, and then we look at what does that need to be today and in the next twenty years? So there's a twenty-year projection on population, we're made with courtesy. Uh, interestingly enough, your twenty-year design population at the time was forty-four hundred. I think your census data was forty-one hundred, so generally coinciding on the population side. The loadings for flow for the organics that make it to the facility, you're, you're under capacity by a decent amount. We're not overly concerned about being under capacity at the moment. But again, D N R gets a crack at it if it impacts what you're able to treat in the future. So we take a look at the, kind of in thirds, a projection of what do you need to accomplish for the next twenty years. The second third is develop the alternatives and the cost estimates, and the third alternative is the user rates and comp here. That gets compiled into a extensive facility plan document and given to D N R for their review. If that approval comes in, it does not commit to any sort of project. It just says, here's, here's our facility plan, here's what we intended to do. And then that opens the door for potential improvements to be done. So to develop the facility plan for the village, uh, we have a hourly not to exceed of thirty-five thousand in here. Um, for you guys, we kind of alluded to it at the, when we went through the sewer project plan a couple of months ago. A lot of aging equipment. Um, it's running twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. And then we do, we do anticipate a closer look at your biosolids handling being needed, which is the sludge that's generated from the process. Because we currently haul that to the D N I always want to treatment facility, and they are undertaking the facility plan right now that is trending towards a solids upgrade of which the village would have some sort of financial contribution to. Um, so we're anticipating needing to take a closer look at that for the village to decide if that's still the long-term best solution, at least on the biosol side for, for the village. So that would all be baked in here as well. I think that's broad strokes where I'm at. Oh, I, I guess when we talked about this, what I was, uh, thinking this was, plan was gonna be, was you're gonna take that sheet that you gave us on what was needed in the one to five years, five to ten, come up with a plan to implement that, you know, with, you know, the timing and the dollars and stuff. I think expanding it, because we have quite a bit of capacity, I think when when we did it in the first, we were on twenty-eight hundred at best. When we built it, it can go to seventy-seven hundred, so we have quite a bit there. I don't know what, how much value it would be in doing a plan now. I think that should be probably farther down the road, especially when you're involving the D N R, and it's gonna be guesswork on that. I, I think what I would like to see is narrow this down to a replacement of the equipment that we have, because my understanding, like the control board, there's different options that we can go with that. It'd be nice to see the different options, because I guess that affects maybe the pumps or something like, you know, the how it ties in. I thought those were the all alternates that we were gonna be talking about. I didn't think we were gonna be talking about something twenty years ago about building potentially another plant or doing it, 'cause I think we're, unless I'm wrong on this from going through this process once before, I think we're, we should be good for at least the next decade or so. And I think maybe a future board would wanna take on the more details of, of that right now than looking at what we're gonna do twenty years from now. Sure. Well, because I think there's so much unknown of that, and if we were close, I mean, while you're right, we're just paying this off and equipment probably needs to be changed. The facility itself is good, you know, in the capacity and, and flow. I have no problem looking to see if maybe Nine Springs is a better place to take the sludge versus Iowa Dane. I think that's always something we should be looking at, you know? So I, I, I think that part of it is, is fine, but when we get into way there and then going to the D N R, getting permission and then doing what the finance could be, we just don't know what things are gonna be that far in advance. We have a fairly new facility. You know, the parts need, but the, the body itself, I mean, a house lasts more than twenty years. You gotta replace this furnace and the air conditioner. Yes, Jerry?
One thing that hasn't been mentioned is the reason we have, uh, pasty for seven thousand bucks. Residents, just because it's designed for this plant that we're currently working with. Permitting for this plant included, say, your stream and stuff. That also had implications on our molding rates. Those have to be modified with the D N R in order to go above the current sun. Those numbers have to be changed. For instance, uh, we're at about forty-one hundred people now. I think we're approved up to now forty-four. And if we get three new subdivisions that push us over that population level, the D N R has the ability to say, you can't build that subdivision until you upgrade your sort of.
I guess I thought three, four years ago, we made that modification, no? I thought, I remember that coming up. I thought we made that modification already. That's what I thought. Maybe I misunderstood what we were voting on, but I thought we were getting the D N R to up our numbers to higher than that forty-seven hundred. I thought it was up to seventy-seven hundred. We, I think you're referring to the re-rating, capacity re-rating. It very quickly ended because we found that there were some sampling discrepancies at the facility that made it appear on paper that the loadings were far exceeding what they should be. And with some simple tubing, um, movements at the plants, that sampling and the, the numbers dropped off, so that never never took off. We never did any re-rating at that time. I think that's.
That issue that we got resolved last mark, uh, two years ago.
Okay, what is the process of proving that our capacity, we can handle that capacity versus doing all of planning for a new facility? What is, what would be, there's gotta be something where, because Jerry's right on. The creamery used to produce an incredible amount of, of wastewater for us. I didn't even think we made them put in some type of system to reduce it at some point, but we don't have that anymore. It's unlikely we're gonna get a creamery in Cross Plains. Um, you know, our change in economic development is now more tourism, recreational, so I think I, I guess I'm just wondering the real need to spend this kind of money on something that may not even be worth it. I think we do need to look at in a good plan to modernize the current facility. I think we all, everybody agrees with that when we were talking about, uh, the reduction in, in rate. Um, and that's what I thought we were going to do, and I, like I say, the sludge is always, that's something we should be doing every couple of years, actually. Yeah, so the, the re-rating, that'll address the numbers on paper. I the one-for-one, the in-kind thing, that's been their historic practice to say, you can do that, that's a maintenance-type project. I don't wanna, I don't wanna engrave that in stone, because there've been a lot of changes at the department that they say, whoa, we didn't get a crack at that. And then it's, oh, you don't have an approved facility plan. So similar but different, where if you do wanna start to undertake these things, the development side of it, get the number, get the numbers where they need to be on the paper, and everybody's happy. The physical equipment and replacing these things, the capital investment usually ends up going through this, needing to go through this route one way or another, because your plan is now twenty years late. Judy?
I was just gonna ask, is for any of the funding for these things or like grants or anything, would you have to have an approval plan?
Yeah, for, enough to pull out another clean water fund, we're gonna do my work down here. I'm gonna prove this, this really good, thank you. Can you do those plans in chapters? 'Cause here's the thing, I, and, and here's the other part. We're working on the comprehensive plan, so a lot of the data you're gonna collect and charge us for the compre- you know, I'm gonna have that happen with Sonya, because we need pop to no population and land use and all of that, so it seems like we're gonna be double, double paying for a lot of the same information. Yeah, so you bring, I mean, bring up a very good point. You, you've already nailed that you don't need to do anything immediately. We wanted to bring this up because you're at the end of your window shortly. I think this will be a required step, both depending on what you do, again, if funding is necessary, I realize you get a lot of the nonsense, maybe too, that I don't wanna sit here and hammer on this. I wanna, I wanna get it out there. If this is something we wanna sit on and we tell some other planning is done to capitalize on that, I don't think that's a bad idea. I do think this is gonna come up sooner than your ten-year window. Well, can we, like I say, I'd like to move forward with the upgrades, for sure. So can we work on that part of it, and then we can do the comprehensive thing, once we get that data in, you can use that to look at future growth and how that could affect, you know, use it for the same thing. We're doing it for land use, you're gonna do it for, uh, the wastewater plant. Can we build it that way instead of you have to do it all at once, or can you put it into chapters? So you can do this in phases, which is different than what you're presenting, you're talking about, this such a silly plan getting done in phases to recommend you name it, X phases of projects. To do a abbreviated facility plan is probably what you're alluding to in, in D N R terms, in order to.
In order to get those high priority things done. They're gonna want this comprehensive look, because you're out of that window. If we were still in that twenty year window, you said, okay, we wanna address. Items one through three on our priority list. They're gonna be okay with an abbreviated one if your current twenty year plan is still.
Yeah, yeah.
So I don't, I get where you're coming from. I don't think it's gonna make it.
Well, like I say, my whole thing with the D N R, I would have that the last hour. They're very difficult to work with at times.
And I'm, even to to your point about getting stuff done, I don't. I think you might hit a wall, or if you do go ahead and get design, get quotes, get things done. And then if you need the funding, if it, it has, has to get seen by D N R, they're gonna say, where's your plan, and then it all gets tabled.
Right, but I, I I am. I'm, I'm pretty sure that we wouldn't need to get funding. That's kind of the, if I'm, I'm I'm going from your broad numbers and I'm looking at. What we have in the bank and what we're gonna be putting in the bank. It it seems like we wouldn't need to necessarily borrow for the upgrades. But again, I need a little bit more data on what uh. On what you, than what you gave us during the budget, so. Like I say, I'd like to start seeing that devolve, even if we have to go to this, I think to me, the first step is, what is your. Upgrading implementation plan.
True.
And then we look at that, we look at the numbers, and then it'll kind of tell us when we need to move forward with the big plan. That's what, what are other people's feelings on that?
Yeah, I think that that's okay, but to your point, we can't apply for any. Uh, clean water drinking loan without this plant with D N R, to your point saying that the sewer has enough money to. Buy self-finance these upgrades, so here's what happened.
I think so, but I I need to know the exact number.
Basically, it sounds like without this plan, we can go apply for any D N R loans.
No, no, that's not what you're saying, any D N Rs for the water system, the wa- the wastewater. We can still go get a D N R grant for the trailhead.
No, and, yeah, oh, okay. If you're gonna fund anything inside the fence through D N R. To go through this process. If you've got the cash on hand to do it or other means, then, yeah, the the funding element goes away. So, okay, so this one, like, we redid a road, we wanted to change the sewer line, we need, except for the sewer system, or we? So you do, if you end up doing a. Cemetery sewer line and fund it through clean water fund, you need to put together a facility plan, which is basically an engineering report saying. Here's why we have to do this. It's either undersized or it's too old. There are no alternatives. This, this is the pipe. So it becomes very simple, and we just do that as part of the design.
Okay, but it isn't this current, okay, that's what.
Now, and that also, this does not address the water, so it doesn't address water, it does not address collection system pipes. This is. In the inside of the fence, okay, cuz.
What what were you looking for tonight?
I I mean, this discussion.
Okay, okay.
You're not hurt my fear feelings if this sits for months or years, you, it's, it's something that you guys need to be aware of.
I mean, appreciate that, Cameron.
Oh, yeah, I I'll just, I I think maybe what Jay is asking for, I'm gonna try words a different way. You yell at me if I'm, if I'm not getting it right, okay, you you talk to your normal. Is there a way we could get like a rough, like, you, cuz you had said at the beginning, like, you could just replace existing parts, probably without. Bothering the D N R or whatever, like, is there a way we could get like, just like a rough copy of like, if you were just doing that, like, just replacing some parts? Here's the top priority ones you need to do in their est- rough estimated cost. I think that's.
We already have that. Yeah, we have that, but you're, the thing what we need to do is fill in the the, the blanks with that. You know, so it says a new control box, okay. At the last meeting, I thought there were different systems you could do, and that affects the other stuff down the line. Those what I thought were the decision making, and again, I have no idea with the different control box. That's what I was looking for, and when does that need to happen? It sounds like that. If I re- hear, remember the discussion, uh, control box should probably be changed immediately, right? So we gotta decide which way we wanna go with that, and then that'll. Send us in a s- a a certain direction. That's what I'm looking for, cuz I wanna, we wanna keep the stuff going, you know, on.
Yeah, so I think if if we take a little bit closer look at your health maintenance items, your high priority list. That would steer if something like this is needed or warranted, is I think what I'm hearing. So we can refine that, sit on this, let me.
So, let let me just add, how much? Would we need to approve tonight for you to get started on that? Cuz you're asking for up to thirty five.
That sewer project plan that we left it. I don't wanna say for sure, but we still got some money left in there.
Oh, okay.
I, I think what I do is just use what you guys have approved this summer.
Okay.
And then if it starts to become above the arm, then I'm gonna come back and revisit it.
Okay, that sounds good. Michael?
But that sewer project plan will become more detailed than what we got the last time a little bit. Yeah, so in no way, shape or form is it a deliverable in the department. It is, it, my intention would be it's, it's. Your list, and it's some somewhat of a narrative describing what we're talking about, and where. Where that plan takes you. If that points to a comprehensive plan being needed, we revisit this. If it means you put out a couple, couple of proposals to get. A control box replaced, you do that, you pay for them, you do onesie twosies.
Okay, so now my other question is, with. What we've heard, is it fine if we just do maintenance on the plant? Will that be fine for the next ten years? Doesn't, you know, do we need any upgrades is what I'm saying. Well, the run for another ten years, that's kind of what we're getting at right now. It sounds like it will, right?
For your. And Jerry, you can chime in, for your, what you've got coming in today, again, without any new developments, without any new creameries. The stuff needs to get replaced. But you're, you're running where you should be. You're not overloaded, the pumps aren't undersized, the stuff's just tight. Right, and or obsolete in some cases.
That's correct, the concrete. Structures are there. Paint deciding or replace rock or something like that, structure. It's the components, pumps, the technical control, things like that. Uh, yeah, by replacing those and. No. Jurassic changes to the incoming flow and loading, will be loaded. Uh, theoretically, it could run indefinitely. But, uh, changes to the incoming flow and loading will. Force.
Anybody else have any questions for him? So you're just, were everybody's good with him just moving forward without any type of action, or do you want someone wants to make in that uh motion? He's got the funding already, it sounds like, so it's just.
I think it's a good discussion, and you guys are at least aware of what's needed.
And and it's basically a continuation of what you gave us a couple of months ago. That's what we're basically making.
Give you guys a a memo or a narrative to help you guys where you wanna go next.
Okay.
That, and that will, to be clear, that is not putting out any proposals, that's not doing any of the design, it's just.
Right, right, yeah, cuz obviously, we, you're gonna be working with Jerry though, right? Yeah, no, I'm just, cuz we're not gonna know if there's a choice A and choice B. At least I don't think you'll be. Knowledge enough to make that call. All right, well, thank you very much, appreciate it. All right. Do I have a motion to open up public hearing on the proposed twenty twenty five budget? I make a motion to open a public hearing on the proposed twenty twenty five budget? All right, any discussion? All in favor, what's that? Okay, I'm sorry, roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Sosie Brandon.
Yes.
Sosie Polakowski.
Yes.
Sosie Brooklyn.
Yes.
Sosie Brennan.
Yes.
Sosie Burford, yes.
Yes. All right, we have a, the public hearing is open now. Is there anybody here that would like to speak at the budget? Public hearing? Is there anybody on the computer that would like to speak at the public hearing?
I'm not seeing anyone.
Nothing?
I don't think so, no, nobody's.
All right, hearing none, last chance. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion and second to close the public hearing, any discussion? Now, this, we don't need to do a roll call, do we? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Public hearing is closed. All right, I'm going to item seven. We'll take on one at a time. So, uh, this is discussion and possible action regarding modification of the twenty twenty five. Budget and supplemental requests. The first one is A, this would be the training overlap of the public facility. One position. Jerry, you wanna speak to this? Or is it Carly gonna take it, someone?
I can, or you wanna take it, Bobby?
Okay, Bobby then.
Who knows, third time's a charm.
So our public facilities one position, um, has put in his retirement notice for January twelve, on the. Hope I guess is that we post this position, um, sooner rather than later, get someone to hopefully have some overlapping training. Um, if the person is hired and starts yet with, in twenty twenty four, that overage would just be paid a fund balance. This supplemental is, would cover January one through January twelve, that overlap, um. So a month of health insurance and then wages benefits for the two weeks, it's about forty six hundred dollars. Um, and again, we would just pay that with fund balance, we would not add that to the tax levy.
Okay, I thought you said the retirement date was January third? Twelve, oh, okay.
So I'm confused, so this money goes to who then? The new person?
Yes, yep.
So what we're doing is paying two people for that position now. Yeah, so there's, uh.
For about two weeks, maybe. This might not even be. Right, so just in case.
Pay it out in cash, like, shouldn't this?
All right, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this, which is on the supplemental budget.
I have a motion and a second and a discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I, all opposed, same. So moved. Number B, similar situation with the public facilities director.
Um, yes, like Jason, it's the same thing, it's just a potential larger over, you know, uh. Duplicate there, I think it would be. I don't, I'm not optimistic we'd have someone in place by January first, um, but for some reason we do, this would be like the maximum. Um, that it would cost, and that's, you know, three months of health insurance, wages, social security, retirement, all that stuff. Have we really posted this one?
No, that's coming down.
Coming about it.
Coming down.
The end of the meeting.
Yeah, eleven and twelve.
Uh, I'll make the motion to approve this training overlap for the public facility director.
Second. Motion and a second discussion. I I think this is. Really important with Jerry being here so long, with all the knowledge he has, I I think. Even with this, I think you can't hit everything, so I think it's, uh. Well worth the investment of of doing it.
I'm curious what, are there, isn't, what was the thought on recruitment, like, it's, it seems like it's a position that might take a little time.
Well, we're gonna, they're asking to have it posted right away. We have until March something. So we have some time, but you're right. Um, it is what is given to us, but I think if the ability to get them here. In time for them to cross train with Jerry would be well worth, uh.
Agreed.
Judy?
What would happen if it's an in-house candidate? Then we wouldn't need this.
Uh, we, we'd probably have to, I don't know, I think he'd still, oh, I see what you're saying, I guess it'd be how fast we fill the other spot.
We would have to do a different person, but I mean, right, if it's in-house.
Right, it could be a couple of weeks less, maybe, I don't know.
We're we're ready to pay that person.
Yeah, but you'd be paying a little bit more, it wouldn't be as high cost, so.
Yeah, you're right, it'd be less, for sure. Cuz they're already on the payroll.
Right, at that point, we adjust.
Well, this is a max.
This is a max anyways.
I think it's, I think it's probably worth a while.
Yeah, I think we're okay for that situation too, just don't spend it more. All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. So moved. Number C, this is the extra money for the skill set that. Um, Jeff brings. And this kind of goes, it's not really. It's kind of goes back to when we passed that compensation, they had something for bonuses, if you remember. That it would, people do it, they get something. I think what was more discussed, if someone builds a set or gets something. We up their space instead of a one-shot bonus, when everybody's competing, so, um, I am. I think this is a good idea. I just, I'm not sure twenty five hundred is the right dollar amount. Um, I'm thinking more a thousand. Um, for this or fifteen hundred, that's, I I think twenty five hundred is is a little higher than what. Than that, I think when I, I did somewhat of a proposal, I don't, did that ever come to the board or did it just staff? On, uh, uh, continuous improvement and stuff, do you remember that? Did that come here or did it just go to staff?
That was just at staff.
Was it just at staff? Okay, so I kind of did something that showed. Um, if someone does like, um, gets a certain skill, and I had some examples, it would be five hundred if they get a bachelor's or a certification. That makes them, you know, um. Higher education area was like a thousand, and and then if they save some, if they had an ongoing. For three years that saved us money, they would get ten percent of of the value. I think it was ten percent, wasn't it, that I? Five, yeah, something like that. So it, this falls with it.
Yeah, it was before me, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's all right.
That did come.
Oh, did it come to the board?
I think we took action on it, it was just in the discussion during like.
Okay, well, anyways, this kind of fits right in with that. I think that's what Jerry was. Kind of using this for, so the question is, uh, what? I personally think there's a value to it. The question is, what is the value?
I would personally like to see something more quantifiable, like, instead of just like, you can drive a skid steer. And I'm not saying that this guy isn't like what they said that he's built.
Was custom.
Right, I'm just saying something like what you were talking about, like, took a course on. Public work safety or something that is like a certificate or.
Yeah, but I think, Jerry, help me out, isn't it that we used to subcontract that work out? To somebody, but now he can do it in, so to me, that's.
That's, that kind of stuff's right in my wheelhouse, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
To see like more.
Yeah, how it's broken.
Yeah.
I I don't know, I guess I can take some, I, I reme- I thought I brought it to the board, but maybe I just didn't bring it back, so we kind of. Got a little bit more of what you're asking for. But what are other people's feelings?
Yeah, I don't know the dollar now, but obviously, these. Yeah, I don't know the dollar now, but obviously if he's doing things and. Able to complete other tasks and more efficiently commensurate with that, I don't know, we don't seem to have a policy for this, this amount, this, that amount, it's, that's very subjective, so. I don't know how to subjectively place an amount.
Cameron? I feel the same, which is why I want to work. What Jerry is asking, I mean, I, I have no expertise in this, I mean, you know, any of this feels great, if the department head is asking for raises. You know, they can justify it. You know, I think, you know, they're gonna know way better than me what that should or should not be.
I disagree with that, I think that's a policy of the board. So if, if someone else comes in with five thousand, we just go with five thousand the next time he comes in at ten thousand? I mean, I think there's gotta be a standard and a discussion on it.
Me exactly.
Yeah, I, I just don't.
If someone goes and gets a job offer, and then they want a counter, like, we would just say, do that, like, I, I guess, like, that, you know, that, that counter could be five thousand more, like, is that the justification, even though there's another skill, like, I, I don't know, it feels weird to like tie everything to like. But you get this amount if you get a college degree, you get this amount if you do this other thing, and you get like, I, I.
It, it makes it fair, it makes the system fair, if everybody, if we go on just what department heads, where, 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 where do you put the ceiling on it? So they, if, this is twenty-five hundred, what if the next department head puts one in for five thousand, we just go with it?
No, I mean, we would, I would say it would have to be like within some sort of budget, but I mean, I don't know, in, in, at least in my professions, like. Departments are a lot of the budget, and then they are able to kind of, you know, go without as they see fit, you know, and if that means. Some stellar all-star gets a huge raise and someone who's underperforming doesn't, like, you know, like. Or someone got a new skill and was doing some new things, so they got a killer raise, like, I don't know, it just, it feels weird for me to like. I have no idea like what this stuff is worth, you know, like. I don't.
Bobby?
I was just gonna try to explain more the justification of the jump from forty-five to fifty-one. So last year, when we were doing this, our original. Plan in August had each position in. Three grade levels, so for this position, say it was like four, five and six. So at the time, Jeff meant the qualifications to be in this grade. And then that plan was saying, you know, in the, you know, in a future year, if he meets the requirements for the next grade. Staff needed to present this to move him up a grade, so that's kind of what. This is based on, is now he really should be in grade five or four, but I get like those grades don't exist anymore, but that is kind of what we're trying to do here is.
Well, the grades still exist.
Right, but they're different than what. We originally put.
Well, let me ask you, with this extra stuff, does he move up a grade from what we have defined as the grades currently? It's broken down to what each grade.
The grades that currently ever pass in January, this position is only in one grade.
Yeah, but, but my question is, because of this added skill. For this. Does it need the next grade up? I, I don't have a memorizer.
No, so to change grades now, an employee would actually need like a different job title, or they'd have to redo the job description, not just being extra skills.
Right, this fellow is like a public facilities two, right?
Yeah.
And then there's just one public, every, on going with public service two, there's one public facilities one, and then there's a department head, it's basically what the.
Oh, is it, okay.
I'd like to get a promotion.
Right, he would have to get the, apply for the public service one to move up a grade, but inside this public facilities two position. This is the low salary, this is the high salary, and as you have more skills, you move up to.
Right, that's exactly right, that's how.
That's why he's asking for more money, cause he's saying he has more skill.
Right, and, and I'm agreeing with that, I agree from day one, the, my question is how you define how much?
Yeah, I don't know.
And, and I'm hearing Cameron says we just go along with what department heads say, and I'm thinking, no, that's not fair, we need to have a standard. Doug?
Just kind of doing the rough math, it's about five percent for the twenty-five hundred, and about three percent to the fifteen hundred. I think three percent is a significant raise for the sum of. Expertise and that's, and they're also gonna be a part of whatever raise we need later, so I can fifteen hundred, it's probably.
You wanna make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we increase the page by fifteen hundred to fifty.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Well. It's, I was, we, I just wasn't sure how we're gonna implement it, are we applying it after to this new raise, are we?
Yeah.
Retrobiting, just an addition onto the twenty-two-five.
Right, this is tied, this is an addition to the base.
Right, we'll still get a raise.
Yes, they, it has nothing to do with the other raises.
Right.
Right, right.
Okay. Let's do a roll call vote, I don't.
Sure, uh, Rusty Polakowski?
Yes.
Rusty Borford?
Yes.
Rusty Brooklyn?
Yes.
Rusty Brennan?
Yes.
Rusty Brandon?
Yes.
Rusty Gavler?
Yes.
Definitely.
Yes. All right. All right, going to. The next one is Ray. And this one, uh, is he's now completed the training to be wastewater treatment. Uh, plant. So he can sell for our permanent person when that person. Is not available, is that correct, Jerry?
That is correct.
Okay.
He's not licensed to operate it. But he is competent enough to operate it in the absence of the operator, which actually, this is in the second week now of doing it, so it's been a little bit.
Okay, but, but you said, in here it says he's completed training, has he completed?
Yeah, he, it took quite a bit of training to learn how to run the plant.
Oh.
Just that licensure, it's not, yeah. Certification, or not a like, a, a license, I don't know, like, is there a license or a certification?
I think there's a license.
He just said he's not licensed.
He's not.
Right, 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 right. But I, but I didn't know, you know, you go to places and you get the certificate that you're, whatever, whatever.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jerry, can I ask you a question, is he thinking about getting a certification? No, he has no interest in getting a cert.
Doug?
I think he's adding more about, because somebody who's like training manager, many years of my life, I actually find structured off the top training is better than.
Yeah, no, I'm not.
I would think it would be a somewhat of three percent, somewhat of what we just did. So. Well, your discussion first, but I.
What are the people's feeling then? This one was a little harder for me. But I guess he's taken on more responsibilities or. Somebody. All right, let's go with it.
I'll, I'll make a motion to increase by three percent or fifteen hundred for the.
A second. All right, I have a motion and a second, I'm just gonna go straight out, all, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed same.
So moved.
All right. We got a cost of. Cost of living adjustment for full-time, non-represented employees.
So following the last meeting, we staff kind of thought. The board was, um. Not really. They weren't all on the same page about kind of wages or. You know, cola versus longevity, so what we did for the budget draft tonight was took out all cola. And just put in the longevity, um, tape. And then that left us with about a thirty-five thousand dollar cushion to the levy. That's how the budget's presented tonight, with no cola, so what we did was just figured out. Um, if we, for each one percent of a cola, that the board would approve tonight for employees, what that looks like. Uh, so that would add eighty-four seventy-five to the levy. Um, obviously it does add some to water and sewer as well, so I think the total, and put in there like twelve thousand, I think. Um, all in. Uh, so that is, um, if you have a one hundred thousand, we'll say a three hundred thousand dollar home in the village. For every one percent that's an extra. These six dollars and twenty-seven cents on tier tax bill. So if you approve like a two percent cola, you know. Twelve dollars, thirteen dollars. Extra, if your home is valued at three hundred dollars.
But that's just for this, it's not for all the other expenditures.
Not for the bottom line.
Not for the longevity, not for the increase in base, not for.
So.
I, I.
This is just cola, yeah, so.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm, that's what I'm, my clarification, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the longevity raises are already included in.
Right.
Yes.
We're, yeah, that's, yeah, that's why I'm, I'm, I'm trying to understand what she's saying with the twelve dollars and everything, because I think it's a lot more, but. But I see what she's saying, she's just doing. The six dollars for each one percent, if I'm hearing this right. Again, I, I want to really understand it so there's no misunderstanding next year, okay?
Keep in mind too, with the, with the longevity. Um, there are, I think, were four employees who are not eligible for a longevity bump in twenty-twenty-five. Um, there's a, you know, some that are, would get three percent, others two percent, so there's no cola approved, you know, you would have some employees who don't get a raise at all. So we. Are asking that you consider, you know, something.
Well, that's kind of where I was coming from with the original. Cap of three percent, you doing longevity and then doing cola, right, that gave everybody. A raise, so it's interesting that we're in this. But didn't, right now, because if we do give the three percent to the people don't get any, then the other people are getting six percent. Right?
Right, but part of that is rewarding them for their length of service.
Well, let's, let's, you know, that's, that has been brought up a number of times, and I bit my tongue all the time, so. How long do you think someone? Has to be in their position to feel that their experience is worth the extra money, how many years? So is it five years, when someone gets five years, now you think they know the job and they have that value, that extra value, is it five years? Is it, what, what number of years? And the reason I'm, I know your puzzle, cause I know which, where, you know where I'm going with this, so. So if we keep saying that this longevity is to reward people for being here. But when you look at how it's structured, someone who's been here three years have, has collected fifty percent. Of the longevity raises already, three years. That's it, we're giving three percent year one, another three percent year two. And another three percent year three, so we're. Brunch loading it, so we're really not. Paying people for their expertise or their longevity, because the people who are there at year eighteen, at year fifteen, they're getting a one percent. Right, so if we're really truly doing longevity in the sense that we want to reward long-term employees, it should be flipped around. It should be one, 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 three.
Right. Can I add on to that?
Go ahead, add on.
I think though, if you look at other places, I don't think that's the tactic they're using, I think they are trying to pull in. And retain those people early on in their career, because once you get, you know, I'm getting to that point in my career, where I've been there long enough, and so like my salary is. Looks a lot better than when I first started, and so especially, I think in the public sector, there's a lot of benefits to staying with it, so it's. I don't know that necessarily continuing to get those large longevity raises are what's necessarily keeping me in, whereas I think. A lot of times, early on in a career, those are really important, and I've seen that a lot of places.
Okay, and, and, and if you sell it that way. Then I can buy into your argument, but I keep hearing with the memos that we give, we should reward our long-term employees with longevity, and quite frankly, that's not what we're doing. Because someone who's been here three years. Is getting fifty percent of the raises that you get out of longevity, it's eighteen, eighteen percent in eighteen years. Right, so I, I'm just, I keep hearing this, and that's not really what's happening. And I'll be honest, uh, if, if I would have understood that the, the market raises of last year, the whole reason I supported longevity is. I thought that would start getting our people quickly up to market raises spread over a three-year period. That's why I supported it, because it was giving these raises plus cola on top of that, so I thought that would build our people up over three years, it'd be easier on the taxpayers. Little did I know that we're kind of, did the market raises and now we're putting these longevity ones on. So that's where I'm coming from on that, so when I hear that we're. You know, you gotta have this because you're rewarding long-term employees, it's really not the case. Cause the long-term employees are getting three percent. Over their last six years, something like that.
I guess, I think of a, of a retainment of all employees.
Yeah, and, and.
And recruitment, because when, you know, when you're looking, when you're looking at different jobs in the public sector. A lot of times you can see their pay scale, and so then that pulls you, and that's pretty much brought me to Middleton from a small business.
Well, absolutely.
Yeah. But. I just.
Doug, so, um, last year we gave raises from three percent to sixteen point six percent, average optimal eight point five. I felt good about that, I felt we took an investment in our. Very valued employees who do great work for us. Um, I do believe that when people save the company and our. Benefits show this as well, you get added vacation days, you get extra other things. And we have more vacation if we worked at a company for twenty years versus five. I think there are added benefits to sticking around, you also know the job well, you get to know people, you know, you work as a team together. I felt very good about what we did last year, I haven't felt great about kind of how we're talking and going after things this year. Um, a, a lot of private organizations have a pool, whether they call it cost of living, or they balance cost of, they have cost of living, half merit, half longevity, you know, whatever it is. Um, because we took a big step last year, I'm more of, uh. And I'm fine if it's a hybrid approach. Where there's a three percent cap, and part of it's cost of living, part of it's longevity, I'm open to that, but. You know, what I'm, what is in my head for what's approving this year, I think it took a very good step last year, so three percent. Yeah. That's mine.
Judy?
And I'm supporting that, and I don't care like if you say one and a half this way, one and a half that way, and one is equals a three percent, I don't. However, they want to adjust it on the bottom line, I don't, that's extreme, however they do it. But you can get that lucky.
Yes, the whole reason we're talking about this is because we can't. Well, I, I don't know, we could, staff was uncomfortable with combining, right, because then some people are getting. One percent cola, whereas others are getting a three percent cola, and so that, that's, that's why we're here having this conversation, so I'm not sure.
And like I say, I, I, I know that was brought up, I don't see any difference in when they capped it at seven percent or us capping it at three percent, I just, I just don't see the difference. You're capping it, and that's what, what, what we're seeing, and, you know. I, um. And I don't think all the. Well, it, it, it depends, I, I think we also just approved the police, and I know they're not getting a, a six, three percent or six percent. Increase. You know, their wages, Doug.
Kind of the last comment I think is. Wages is one part of the, that other package, right? You, you know, and that package costs tax, so we are doing all public insurance, so not nine percent. There's an increase of nine percent in health insurance, an increase, that's twelve percent, so. That's also a part of, you know, how organizations, businesses, and what I think smart municipalities do, is look at the big picture and the whole thing. I don't like being right up against the levy personally, I don't do it at home, I don't spend all that I get, I put some away for emergencies, so I don't want to be right up against the levy, I know some humanities like that, I personally don't. So I, I think three percent in this market, especially compared to what we did last year, I think is very fair.
Cameron?
I've thought about this a lot. Um, and I think. When we were talking about all the longevity and stuff, my job did something similar where we had like huge bonus every year, but they, the feedback was that. People wanted more kind of guaranteed, so they scaled the bonuses way back, but it, you know, compensate people salaries went up, you know, basic salary, whatever. Uh, I, when we put in the longevity and there was, you know, all the stuff there, that was kind of my. Uh, I, when we put in the longevity, and there was, you know, all the stuff there, that was kinda my thought was, especially all the front end, you know. Uh, higher percentages, that cola might be a little less, because on the average, with that longevity, you're also getting. You know, you know, guaranteed raises outside of cola, so I I think for this year, I would support one percent cola. Um, I understand that leaves us with a few employees who are getting only one percent, and that is not great. But that's also part of why the longevity is there, if they stick around for a couple of years, they're gonna get six percent. You know, from the longevity, you know, that that's gonna come guaranteed through the longevity, so.
To clarify what you're saying, you're saying whoever hits a longevity bonus gets two percent, anyone else that doesn't gets one percent.
I think everyone gets one percent, and then we also do longevity on top of that, so for people who get two percent longevity, will get thirty.
That would give people one percent to a four percent raise. Oh, yeah, yeah, cause long, the most you can get on longevity is three percent. So he's saying you give everybody longevity, and then everybody gets full of one percent. So you would get, so the employees would be one percent to four percent.
And I guess, and I I just to clarify, I understand that that doesn't match the three percent and stuff, you know, that I R S put out and other numbers we're looking at, but. That also assumes that there isn't, you know, you know, we have baked in raises as well on top of that, so.
I I can live with either one, I just think the three percent capping is more fair, that's just. That's just where I, where I'm at, but I I certainly would support that, I certainly would support that, it's just. Well, uh, Michael, did you wanna say something?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I don't know where I fall inside of this, and I looked at this, and. You know, it just depends, where I always come back to is, what is the purpose of our step raises, are our step raises? In terms of longevity, to try to compensate employees who are initially taken on, and they give them a three percent, three percent, three percent. And if that's the case, when we place people initially into the step raises, we gave people a lot of time here, we placed them last year. Or, you know, in into step three, so they're in step four this year, so they're qualifying for a two percent, is that correct? Is that really, do we post people in the right places, is my other question, you have people here for a lot of time, we got placed. As, or somebody only has been here for four years, they've really been placed working for longer, so their salaries are generally higher, and. That's causing a skew in those step raises, for more money going towards people who've been here a lot with higher salaries, rather than. Being directed toward people with lower salaries, when you're trying to actually encourage them to stay. It's just a weird.
No, no, I see what you're saying, but you you understand eventually the world will be balanced, right, when someone gets hired. They will be getting within three years the nine percent. You're right, the 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 big thing was the starting point on trying to, cause we just couldn't afford to give everybody. I mean, we couldn't afford to give the people eighteen percent raise, right, so we had it. So the minimum, well, the maximum would be six years, but as we go in, there'll be less and less of that impact. And I understand where you're coming from on that, but that's why I think we do need to play that into consideration, and that's why. You know, the idea of capping it, and then, yeah, everybody gets it, but it moves people along, but it also doesn't leave someone with very little. Cause you're right, it's 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 the people in the lower bracket that.
Right, well, absolutely, if you.
And 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 that's what I, that's exactly why I chose the wording that I did.
Cause if you go to a, you know, like a three percent max, like what you're talking about, everybody gets three percent, everyone's gonna get. I mean, if you go to a three percent max, you're basically giving everyone a three percent cola raise, and you're not providing a step raise this year, it's essential.
No, I disagree, I disagree with that.
The way I look at it is, if you do it that way, then let's say, we have so much money in a couple of years, who knows, and the, I know. But let's just, it could, it could happen, you you know, somebody could have it, or we could work it into our budget, or we could give everyone the cola raise, and we could give everyone. Their longevity raise, that means if you happen to be the people who were on the year where they get their longevity raise. You've, you've got an additional raise, whereas this year, if everyone gets three percent, you essentially didn't get a.
But but Sarah, we did that last year, there were people that got sixteen point six percent raise, and some only got three percent raise. So there was a difference, they.
I see that as a different thing, that was a market adjustment, this is a longevity.
It's a longevity, again, but because we weren't able to sit everybody in, we grouped them in, right? We had only three groups.
Right.
Out of nine steps.
Right, but when I still see them as two very different things, I believe some agrees with me, and so I I'm not the only one.
No, no, I agree with you a hundred percent.
No, you just said you disagree that last year was a market adjustment.
No, no, I didn't, it was a market adjustment last year, absolutely.
Right, but you're saying, then you just said that they're the same thing.
No, the same thing that I'm saying is, when they did all their numbers, they capped it at seven thousand, some people should have got more than. Using their formula.
Right.
Right, they capped it at seven thousand, how's that any different than me saying we're capping it at three percent?
Because we're not following the longevity.
Sure we are, there's not one person not getting their longevity.
Somebody's getting an additional raise because they've been here a certain amount of time, they're getting the exact same raise as everyone else. It's like.
Yes, that is correct, but.
It's like, okay, if I, like, if you get a master's, you get a raise, so if they got the same raise as everyone else, they essentially didn't get a raise.
No, but but again, just like you said, this is not, longevity is not really for the long run, it's to hold people, right? That's what your words were, it's a recruitment and retention, you said retention and recruitment.
But what I'm saying, but we know that people are here a long time, they still get. Up to so many years, they still get a longevity raise.
Well, no, some people will be outside of that.
But I said like.
But yes, they will for.
Yeah.
The people who've been here over fifteen years will get it for six years, and then it's done for them.
I was just saying, I understood why you might have it higher early on.
Yeah, no, and I agree with it.
Okay.
But if you're really wanting to reward people for being here a long time, then it should be flipped on what we have, that's what was my point. It's, as you pointed out, it's more of a recruitment and retention, because you're right, after three years, they're nine percent higher, not counting any of the other raises. But I think, again, this is somewhat of a unique year, because we just started the longevity, and we did all the market raises last year. So, I mean, you've gotta factor that in a little bit.
Right, I guess I just, I agree with the the rationale that Cameron is using and the way he wants to go about it.
It, you like I say, I can support him on that, it's just that there are some people will get four percent, some will only get one percent, and if you're comfortable with that. You know, I just think it's a fairer system until we get down the road a little bit, where everybody fits in. And then it'll make it a lot easier for everybody.
This is our first year of having.
Second.
Second of longevity bonuses.
Yeah.
But then as we said, the first year, we're like actually following the plan.
Right.
Sure.
Well, maybe, maybe for you guys, cause I still don't know your formula, but anyways, I I. It it was the, I don't wanna go into that, but uh, we definitely used it last year. Again, I I had to, if you remember, I had to bring it up for reconsideration, just like I'm gonna be doing something tonight. So we would get those people their pay, if you remember that, but, okay, so, Mike?
I just have a question, can you, can you explain to me how the market adjustment is affecting somebody's step? For where they're at, so like, people, you said people that had the market adjustment last year, or their, or employees per se that are not getting their step?
No, it's it, no, you're a hundred percent, it has nothing to relate it with that, it's a matter of being able to cost. So right now, last year, we had these big raises, some people this year, if we went with the first plan, was six, another six point two percent. Right?
Longevity plus your bottom cola.
Yeah, the the three point two, so that was another six point two, I thought that was too high back-to-back years. And if you look at the year before, we jumped up some people also that year, so that, so it's not. Everybody's trying to relate things, not, I'm looking big picture at the amount of money that we're spending. It's a cost thing, a lot of places like Doug said, is, this is how much they can spend. This is how much we wanna spend on salaries, how do we break it out and work it out with everybody, that's what we're saying. And we spent just on salary, not counting all the benefits, a hundred and one thousand. Last year, and it was up to seventy two thousand this year, if we would have gone with what was originally proposed. On the spreadsheet, that's a lot of money, I think we need to. We need to recoup, and and like I say, I I'm, we need to get through this budget in February, we're gonna have a real healthy discussion on this, so. This doesn't have, doesn't come up here, we have it all worked out ahead of time. Because I think the goalpost keeps moving, so to answer your question, the reason in June where I put. A cap of three percent was the amount of money that I thought we were gonna be having. Giving some gap between the levy limit and what we're spending, and looking at where salaries were, where we brought them up. That I thought this was a main, a maintenance year, just maintain. That's just where I was coming from. Doug?
The two thousand twenty five cola rate for social security is two point five percent, so, just food for thought, I would make a motion that we. Raise wages three percent in accommodation, the cost of living and longevity, so I can, it's a three percent, I would make that motion.
All right, all right, we have a motion and a second discussion, Judy.
One of the reasons I support that is because if we wouldn't do the one percent in cola, and then do the longevity, like. Some people might only get one percent or not even that, and they might.
Forget one percent.
They get one percent, so this way, I feel like it's fair that everybody, you know, no matter where they fall in the longevity, everybody will get three percent. Rather than some will be four and some only getting one, this is, yeah, cause that would happen to the other.
Okay, I have Sarah and then Cameron.
With any, with the longevity raise, so people are always, we're always going to have people getting different raises. So I guess that's why I'm questioning why, when we approved the longevity now, people are saying they don't want people to get different levels of raises.
No, I don't think, go ahead, Cameron, then myself.
I I was just gonna say, I mean, I, I I I don't know, I. I mean, I wanna see staff get something this year, it doesn't still feel right that it's kinda combined, and I understand it's fair. But like, I don't know, they're supposed to, I mean, the, what, part of why the longevity is there is to incent people to stay for a little bit, and so. And you know, I I would hope those people who, you know, I mean, they're gonna get three percent this year for cola. You know, if we vote this through, but you know, they would have got one percent if we just did the one percent cola, but like, I don't know, like, then then we keep the incentive that they stick around to get their three, six, nine percent. In the next couple of years, whereas in our, you know, I I don't know, I I probably, I'm gonna vote for this one either, way it doesn't matter, it just feels weird that we're agreeing on.
I I I know we're getting kind of, I I think we just, we just have to be somewhat patient. For this longevity to get spread out, the way it needs to be, then then you'll see it, it's just that we bunched everything, cause we had to. So we just have to give it, every year, it's gonna be spread out, and Sarah, I hear where you're coming from on that, and I. Overall, agree with you, all right, I agree a hundred percent, but this is not where it's been out there and it's done, we've really artificially placed people in. You know, into spots where they are getting it, you know, so I think we just have to be a little bit patient on this, and I think. Fairness is where we we need to be right now, and I think next year, you're gonna see it probably a little different, much different probably. All right.
I have a question, so. We have this issue with the step and the colon, the three percent, um. I guess my one question is that people don't get a step raise this year, then next year, do they advance a step and get placed in a new one? Cause apparently they're being combined into step raises, everyone go, would go forward a year in terms of the plan that functions that, so everyone would just move forward. Just, right, kinda what it sounds like, so I'm offering a corollary solution, that everyone gets a three percent cola raise. But anyone who's eligible for a step raise this year, they only get one percent. So anyone who's eligible, three percent raise of a step, so I mean, some people are getting four, and some people are getting three. People who are eligible for a step raise, they just get one percent, cause next year, they're gonna move forward once, so this year, they're getting something in that step, but everybody's getting a core. What I'm saying, and what.
Like an additional percent. Those, those who would have qualified for.
Qualify for a step, get one percent more, and basically, that's gonna be practically everybody, there's going to be four or five employees getting three percent, the rest will be receiving below.
Okay, help me understand, so the, a person who's getting a two percent step raise, what do they get for cola?
Everyone's getting a three percent cola raise.
And he's saying if you would get two percent, you're getting one.
One percent, if you're in the column where you qualify for a step raise, it's just one percent this year, that means, so basically.
Oh, I, so what you're, but see, that to me is you're ignoring the step raises and the longevity, right, you're you're. You're, you're, you're capping it at one percent.
I'm capping the step raises this year at one percent, and the cost of living is three is what I'm doing. So many employees would be getting four, some would be getting three.
You know the thoughts, difference.
Increasing, changing the step raise to one percent for everybody who's eligible adds eight thousand one hundred ninety five dollars to the budget. The the three percent cola raise looks like it adds, I mean, the cost, not. Uh, the cost is thirty three thousand seven hundred, so the total cost is forty one thousand, and right now, there's twenty thousand in the budget, if we were just going off of the step.
I was gonna say, I would, it would take some calculating, cause yeah, not everyone's a hundred percent on levies, but.
Oh, right, so yeah, so not everyone's a hundred percent on the levy, right, okay.
So it's, it's a little more.
Right, but it would be thirty five, yeah.
I think if my motion fails, I might be compromised, but I prefer my motion stays asked, cause I would.
I think this is my.
If it doesn't pass, we're gonna talk a lot.
I'm just wondering if this is gonna be an annual thing.
No, it shouldn't, it should spread out, the farther we go down, the more it spreads out. Yeah, and there'll be more and more people that don't get a, a longevity, cause we won't get it every year, it spreads it out, it's. Like I say, I knew it was gonna be difficult the next, you know, the first year to probably year three for sure, maybe year four. It, I I did go, I did go out with each employee and figure it out, but because we did this, there's catch up, people are catching up. Which is, so, no, this should not be every year, eventually, this is gonna be very smooth, I have Sarah, then Michael.
So do you see in the future where our conversation will mostly be around the cost of living?
We won't be talking about longevity at all.
Right, it'll just happen, and we'll just have a conversation about our cost of living.
Yep. Michael?
Talking about the spread out with the way that the step raises are structured, cause inside my spreadsheet, I went out four years forward, next year, everybody receives a step raise. In twenty twenty seven, everybody except one employee receives a step.
I understand, but they have.
Probably aren't spreading out.
But but that's the cost, what is the cost on, on the percent?
Uh, like what the, of the budget, I don't know.
No, no, the people, they're not all getting three percent next year.
They're all threes and twos.
Okay, threes and twos, all right.
The year after that, they're all threes and twos.
Yeah, okay.
But that's, yeah, that's the step raises.
Yeah, no, I understand that, I understand that, but it should spread out because there's gaps there.
It, I would imagine eventually, yes, in twenty twenty eight, you definitely start, things start to.
Yeah.
Fall out, but for the next two years.
Yeah, well, that's what I kinda said, three, four years, it's gonna be a little rough, but we'll manage. All right, so I have a motion, and a second, we have discussion, we're gonna do a roll call, and it's Doug's motion. Of capping the raise at three percent.
Trusty Brennan?
Yes.
Trusty Kellier, yes, trusty Brown?
Yes.
Trusty Borger, or, yeah, sorry, just you, your win.
Yes.
Trusty Borger?
Yes.
Trusty Bonacost?
No.
Presenting.
Yes. All right, it moves, all right, number eight, discussion and possible action regarding the twenty twenty five budget. Number eight is the capital fund, can we do a discussion first before we do a motion? There's a couple of things on the capital, uh, well. There's a couple of things on the capital, uh, well, the things to discuss. One that I'm gonna cover is. Um, Carly, Jerry and I talked. And, uh, we all think it's best to move the HVAC of the. Uh, Public Works Facility to twenty twenty six. Just put it on the SIP there. There's a number of options we're looking at, at Mike. Not, we might be able to do that, um, would not require that cost. So we'll send spending money right now. We will see, I don't know if the architect. Firm, we ask them to look at it. If they send something back, that's great. We, we can, we may bring it back up, but right now. Uh, there's options on the table besides spending that. So, um, that one, we'd like to move to twenty twenty six. So, um, we're gonna go through these and then we'll do separate motions on that, then do the capital as presented. Does that? Make sense to you? Okay, just to keep things clean. Michael, did you wanna bring up yours?
Sure, I can kind of. Get it to load up. Um, yeah, so I was going through the capital budget and noticed. That it wasn't a direct vote that we had. It was eighty to ninety thousand dollars for engineering work for the highway KP project. I don't believe that this item has ever officially been approved or voted on by the village board. We approved getting some. Grants for the trail, but we never actually said we wanted to actually approve highway KP. But I noticed that this was in the capital fund. I sent Bobby an email. She had said that the. Highway KP was in the CIT for twenty twenty six, was in the accepted form, why this was placed here, but. I, I'm, this wasn't a direct vote by the board. This needs to be considered if people want to proceed with this project. Considering that we're gonna be taking out a lot of debt concerning village hall, possibly a pool. You go out there and you look at the road in places. Doesn't even need to be replaced. And do we even wanna take it from Big County? There's nothing that says that we have to.
I think we've done a memorandum of understanding and a resolution for this project, so I think you will. Not like a hundred percent, but there's been a lot of discussions about this project and I feel like this work was supportive of it.
Well, I, I, I'm kinda with, I know the resolutions and stuff, but Mike, can you please come up and help answer these things? Okay, I thought the two resolutions that we did were to accept. The money, the two hundred and fifty thousand from, was it the DNR and Day County Parks, right?
Right. Yeah, uh, Day County, yeah.
Yeah, those two, and that was for the trail.
Just the trail.
Just the trail.
Correct.
Okay.
It's the electric, right?
Huh? It's a multi.
Okay, okay.
It could be, uh, more or less bringing the path that is currently in the scenic valley subdivision.
Yes.
Up to what we had done on Bourbon, which actually brings everything together, April water.
So scenic, the, the path in front of scenic valley, that's okay, that's.
Yeah.
We're not gonna do it. So it's basically from there to Bourbon.
From Gil's Way.
Yeah.
Um, down to Bourbon Road.
Okay.
And right now that path is anywhere from two feet to three feet and with some really bad shit.
Yeah, yeah.
We've had a number of actually people from, from, uh, from. Milestone that have wheelchairs in their hands that have actually flipped out of the wheelchair lands. We have had.
Yeah, no, I, I think every, and I remember.
That's what kinda pushed this to say, we need to, we need to do this project. But then we allowed the county country to, like, the grant for it, the first grant for it. And then the board authorized that new resolution. We received the grant, um. So we accepted it.
Yep.
Saying that we will do this project. The idea was to, that we would do this project in conjunction with highway KP since it would all be tore up and. And we also need the county right of way, the county right of way. To possibly expand that trail. The, the topography between milestone and Bourbon. Um, along with the stormwater, maybe it'd be shifted and moved a little bit. So we're gonna need some right of way for that portion. We can't condemn. Any property or trails, you can only do it for roads. So the whole goal is to work within the county jurisdiction to expand that trail.
But this would get, this is where I'm a little confused. I thought the county side of KP. Was the north side and ours was what, you know, we're, the rip property.
Okay.
That's the side that the county owned. No?
I, I think they own the whole thing.
No, I thought we owned half.
Jerry would know that one, uh, the road aspect.
Yeah, yeah.
At this point in time, AP from Blue Bridge. All the way out, the roadway is still day covered. What you drive. We have. Very irregular line of. Right of way on the. On the short side, rip side.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, that was done to accommodate San Teres.
Yeah.
We have these that are in San Teres.
Okay.
In the day economy. And then the right of way had to be. Modified in places to make it fit, to have rooms put tight in.
Okay. So i- is there a po- is it possible to put the trail in? Without doing the road if we got right away from the county?
I don't think we would get right of way. Yeah, there may be some. If you did it that way, probably more, we'd plant a little acquisition because. Even on the south side of KP, there is not much right of way. It's all on the north side, so.
And there's the topography.
Yeah, so you have the hillside. You also have another issue. We have another issue within that, which is the ATC lines.
Well, then, then how's that gonna disappear even if we do the road?
No, it's not. That's why a trail needs to be moved inside that. Or shifted and, and that's the area where Town and Country's gonna have to get kind of created, I think. We may end up having to take a little, uh, mountain biking area out to work, something of that sort to be able to get the trail through. And then rebuild the entrance to the mountain, maybe.
Right, but that one, that doesn't affect the road. See, I, 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 what Michael, I think what Michael's bringing out. And it's, it's somewhat of a valid point. There's two negatives, in my opinion, of taking. Doing the, the road KP. One, it isn't pretty good shape. So we're, we're taking out a good road. And number two, the county's gonna force it down our throat that we have to take over it. So now we're responsible for the maintenance and all the future replacement, cuz that's. Their model now of saving money is forcing municipalities to take over their county roads. That are in the, in the jurisdiction, so.
The road is in a completely separate department than mine?
Yeah, but, but they're tied.
Part of it, and we know that with, you know, just talking to Town and Country, having Strand look at this before.
Yeah.
And, and we had Strand actually come out and do, um, some surveying in that area just to see what, and. Is it like, yeah, it's just very tight, um.
Thirty percent.
And that's probably why it's a three foot wide path right now.
Yeah, no, I, I, I hear you. And like I say, I'm a hundred percent for the trail because.
You can't do the trail without the crawl.
Well, that's, that's the part that I'm, I'm questioning if that's really the key.
And I could say I, I can't answer that. I would, I would tip Brian with here. I'd say, hey, what do you think? Cuz I know that he's laid it out, kind of looked at it. Our, our whole thought process at the beginning of this is like, has I been calling for this project for years?
Yes, I know they have.
Supposed to be part of the bridge project and obviously that happened before it. So, you know, the bridge was the main thing that probably would need to be done. Your road isn't really that bad.
No.
It's just that the way legislation is set up, you cannot condemn private property or trails. So our thought process was, well, this road needs to be done. This is a great time to do it all. We can kind of. We got grant money for the trail, so that's taken care of. Um, it's more, you can, you shift the road a little bit or move the road so that. The trail can fit next to it. That was kind of.
No, like I say, I, I understand that in, in fact. It's just the county pushes and willing to pay half. Because they know it's gonna save them a whole load of money in the future. They've taken off miles and miles of county roads.
Yeah.
By doing this. Whoever came up with it was a genius when it comes to saving money. So I'm, that's where I think we're, because what is the, I, I have not seen, what's the cost to do KP?
But.
I don't know.
Well, it's, it's hard.
CIT. I think the total.
But I, two million?
I mean, up, up a hundred.
Cuz I didn't think we needed to put any sewer or water. It's all new, right?
Water and sewer is in fine shape, but needs, uh, some storm sewer.
Oh, store.
But it does not hurt it.
And we can't keep it the way it is, just going right into the fields there?
Well, the overall drainage is still gonna go into the fields, but we'll have to control how the water gets there.
Okay, I see.
Similar to what they did with the highway nineteen. You put in urban areas, sections to control where the water runs through.
Uh, okay.
Now, you talk about, um, responsibility for the road. There's some value to your argument, but I don't think it's, uh. Real valid argument about the, they, they call me saving so much money. Um, they're only ever gonna pay for the center twenty two feet. Anything beyond that, the municipality is responsible.
Yeah, I, I, the only reason I say that is Madison obviously did the numbers and they're, they sued him over it. I don't know where that case is. But Madison is saying absolutely not. They're your roads, you, we're not taking over. That's the only reason I say someone did some number crunching.
If they have some agreement that I'm not aware of. I'm just.
Yeah.
What I learned with the highway P project.
Yeah, no. All right.
Anything that needs maintained outside of the center twenty two feet would hardly be pulled.
Right. Yeah. Go ahead.
So the CIT had the project estimated at three million, thirty thousand. So we have grants for the trail part at five hundred fifteen thousand. The county reported one point five million, so our, we have to borrow a million.
What's our file number?
Sounds like a million.
That's some, oh, right, the, the number I think of is probably three or four years old, so.
So this eighteen thousand that we have in, what, what are we getting for this?
The eighty five.
Oh, the eighty five, I'm sorry.
Um, it's gonna be part of the entire project. So it's just, we're breaking out the whole project into like two years essentially. So at Town and Country, when I asked them about this project, they said that they would love to get started on the engineering and planning next year. So that way in twenty twenty six, we can get going right away.
So this is the engineering for the road and the path?
Yeah.
And the storm sewer.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a twenty six project. Right, project to take place in. Which is one we told the county there.
Can we, can we put this on the, the staff meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Next week and.
Yeah.
That way I can let Bri- ask Brian about that.
Yeah, is there anything we can find out? This project, it must be a trail only project or not? Yeah, that's what I'll ask. Pretty much like, but I wanna, can we get this taken off the capital? I mean, we can always add it back on.
Right, yeah, we can approve the capital plan for the capital budget without this and then do a budget as mentioned next year.
Yeah, if we wanna put it back on.
I'm okay with that. I would like to do that. All right. All right, does anybody else have a capital project they wanna talk about? All right, I'm gonna make a motion to move the. Uh, Public Works Facility HVAC, uh, item to twenty twenty six. I'm sorry, I'm done. All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same. All right, so move. Go ahead, make your motion.
I'll motion to remove the planning and engineering for county highway KP multi-use trail on the capital fund budget.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same, so move. So now I need a motion to accept the capital. Uh, fund budget. Just, I guess that's, that's a man to thank you. I was, I'm trying to come up with the word.
I'll make a motion to approve the capital budget as amended.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same, so move. All right, we'll go to B. Unless someone has any changes or questions on this, do I have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the debt service fund in twenty twenty five.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same. C, tax increment district fund, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the, um, fund as before.
Do I have a second? A motion and a, oh, a discussion?
I have just a quick question on this one. Uh, I, I, I believe we talked about this, but there's the vague jump for this year cuz we're paying it off, right?
No, we're paying the TID off. We are, we made a deal with, um. What's that? Milestone, thank you, to try to pay that part off early. Because the interest rate goes up to seven percent. So we are paying a large amount in January.
Okay.
And then in July, we're gonna look to see what we have and whatever money we're gonna pay more off. And then next year we'll pay that off. And they were, um, as you go pay. So if we did do that, we would be paying the interest all the way to twenty thirty seven.
Right.
But they were okay. So we're gonna save tens of thousands of dollars over the longer. So that's what that was. Yeah.
I was reviewing this, I was like, wait a second.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the jump in the tax increment revenue, that number is based on all the levies. And so that's why that jumped is because all the levies went up. So we can't really approve the. TID budget as presented because we were changing our levy based on our supplements we approved. So I have to recalculate the TID increment.
Oh.
Number. So we can approve it like with just that caveat that we know the increment revenue number will change based on the. Changes we're making to the general fund and stuff.
Okay, so, how do you want that? That would even get me confused. So it would be approved in this. With the understanding, the adjustment to.
The levy will affect the.
Levy limit.
That's what my motion was.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Oh, Doug, I already did.
Oh, okay, thank you. All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same, so move. General fund. Do I have a motion for the general fund?
I will make the motion to approve the general fund budget.
With the a- adjustment. Yeah, with the, yeah, I'd say ju- adjustments.
Mid-adjustments.
That were passed.
Yeah.
That we covered earlier.
That we passed earlier.
Right.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same.
Go to you.
It's my kind of second.
All right, library fund.
I'll make a motion to approve the library fund.
I'll say, does this one need adjustments?
Yeah, they all do.
Yeah.
The water and service also.
Yeah. And Judy, did you get Judy seconded?
Oh, yeah, Sarah made the motion.
Yep.
Yeah.
Life, oh, no, no, we're on library.
Yeah, library.
Library to Sarah.
Judy.
Going too fast.
Okay. And, and discussion. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. All right, water utility fund, it'll need with adjustments. Anybody wanna make that motion?
I motion to approve the water utility fund with adjustments.
I have a motion second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same, so move. About the sewer utility fund.
I motion to approve the sewer. I motion to approve the sewer utility fund with adjustments.
Okay, I got a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. So move. Alright, so we have a resolution. Uh, for the twenty twenty four payable twenty twenty five tax levy. Do they need to be separate, or you want them all as one?
No, it's one resolution.
Okay, okay, and uh, um. Adopting uh, twenty twenty five budget. I have a motion.
I motion to approve the resolution setting the twenty twenty four payable twenty twenty five tax levy on adopting the twenty twenty five budget.
I'll second that. Alright, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same, alright. We threw that. Alright. Uh, nine, discussion and possible action regarding proposed personnel policy changes. Um, to save time here, uh, cause I know it's getting long, I have no problem postponing this. Discussion, as long as I have a date on when the manual is going to be updated. It's going on three years now or more, cause this was when Bill was here, we talked about it, so. By the February board meeting, would that be reasonable?
I believe so.
A draft, a draft.
Two months.
Three.
Well, yeah, three.
Alright.
Yeah, we'll have a draft presented at the February.
So can I, I'll make a motion to propose postpone. Number nine to uh, the February. Uh, board, the regular February board meeting, with the understanding that a draft of the.
Cross Plains Personnel Policy Manual.
Yeah, manual will be submitted, alright. Okay, thank you, any discussion?
A question?
Okay, Cameron and then Michael here.
Okay, sorry. Um. Does the staff manual need to be updated?
Yeah.
Yes.
It does, yeah.
That's, that was my question.
That was quick.
Mike, okay, well, that was my question, but I was gonna say, what's, like, what's in a specific example? Well, just what I, what I proposed was to update the current man, I, it's been sitting for a long time. There's been a number of policies that need to be changed, these were two of them that I felt really needed to change, those two. Yeah, and there's others.
Yeah, there's.
So we've been working on this, like they said, a couple of years, we actually had an attorney from Boardman and Clark, they were like HR specialists, went through our policy, redlined it. Um, updated a lot of things, made it. Brought it into current times, so we just, and then it just kind of fell off, so we have a lot of the work done already, we just need to. Pick it back up and back up.
Okay, that's my question, like, that's close, but you've already, you have a lot of it.
Yeah, like I said, we have a good start on it.
Okay.
Alrighty, any other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Alright, number ten, discussion and possible reconsideration regarding approval of the agreement between the Village of Cross Plains. And Cross Plains Professional Police Association. So how this works is, we're gonna vote on if there's enough, majority wants to reconsider the action that was done. At the last meeting. Uh, the reason this is brought up, last meeting, we approved the contract. With the ask to change Article Three to put they, them in, that was by Sarah. I have talked with Sarah, and I've talked with the representative uh, from their, from the WPPA. That did the negotiations. The best course of action is to, um. Move this request to next year, because the. Contract that we saw was ratified and signed by the police officers, so. Basically, we are trying to, one way you could look at it, we could try to amend it. The others is, we would say we're not gonna approve it, so then it would end up reopening negotiations. And that's a lot of time and work, so. One reason we did a one-year contract, so. It would be quick to do it, so Sarah's agreed that she's okay with that. Uh, Luanne is okay with it, so what I'm asking is, we'll go for reconsideration. And then we'll bring the contract back up to vote on it as if it was being the first time we've seen it. And then we'll vote, Cameron?
I was just gonna say, when I was rereading this, I did see Article Three dot zero one, did you see that, and with that? Uh, it just, it says all references to he or his are assumed to apply with equal force to she or her.
Yeah, but she wants they and them.
I see, okay, I didn't know it, okay, okay. I, I, I wasn't sure.
So, can I have a motion? Uh, for reconsideration of the Cross Plains Professional uh, Police Association contract?
I'll make the, that motion.
Alright, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Alright, any more discussion, all it's saying is, we're gonna reconsider that agreement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Alright, so now we've reconsidered that contract as presented to us. Tonight again, is what we're voting on. Do I have a motion to accept the contract?
I'll make that motion.
I have a sec?
I'll second. For Sarah, someone.
Alright. Yes, so right now, what it is, is the contract there, is there any discussion on that contract? Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same, so move. Alright, so number eleven, discussion and possible action regarding posting of Public Facilities One announcement. Uh, position opening January thirteenth.
Yep, so this is just gonna be a really quick one, um, just asking for permission to post. The Public Facilities One position, um, it'll remain at the current range of forty seven thousand to seventy two thousand, so we're requesting to post. Um, the position beginning December one of twenty twenty four, um, and that's all we've got.
Alright, we're, I, I thought we've changed this where staff can automatically post openings if we have that, I'm not.
This one's different, cause it's not open yet.
Yes.
We just, we just approved the overlaps.
Right.
So, but, so.
Oh, I see what you.
The position's not open yet, so it's just a formality, it's.
Alright. Alright, we got a motion, second, any discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Number twelve, discussion and possible action regarding posting of the Public Facilities Director Announcements, posting. Position opening mid-March twenty twenty five.
So it's very similar, um, for Jerry's position, requesting to post as of December one.
Motion to oppose the Public Facility Director.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. So move. Alright, so number thirteen, discussion and possible action. Uh, regarding the date of the December board meeting, we usually move this one to the second Monday. Of the month, which would be the ninth versus uh, going on the twenty third. Producing people rather go on the twenty third. I kind of figured that.
I can't make the night.
I won't make the night, no. You're fine, it's still a form.
Alright, so do I have a motion to move the regular December board meeting to December ninth?
I'll make that one.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same, we'll probably have a late one. For sure, alright. Oh, I didn't know you already had that on here, alright, I missed that, discussion and possible action regarding a special January board meeting, I'm not sure. I've already declared.
Right.
The thirteenth, I'm sorry.
Yep. So I think we're good.
Yeah, I don't think we can detail a motion on that, that can just die.
And that's just what it is.
Alrighty. Future agenda items. Alright, well, I have a motion to adjourn, so move. Alright, I have. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. So move, very good, thank you, people.